Okay, good afternoon everybody. It's two o'clock so we'll get started. We have a lot of items on the agenda and I would like to get it finished before my bedtime is possible. First of all, welcome to all everybody attending today. Just some safety information to begin with. There is no planned fire over here, so if the alarm does go off, then can I please ask you to exit the main entrance of City Hall? And then turn right, go down to the bottom of the room and over to the cafeteria. And then please wait for my officer signs you off. My name is councillor Tony Dyer. I am the vice chair of the Audit Committee. And I'm standing in for councillor Andrew Brown. You as the usual chair because he is on other business today. What I would do is I'll quickly ask the councillors and the independent members of audit to introduce themselves. And then what I'll ask is when we come to your item, if you could briefly introduce yourselves as and when you come to speak. So if we start with councillors, any good one?
Yeah, councillor Ethan Fieldwood.
Councillor Faye, that was Sir George Chubbis.
The Labour Party Independent Member.
Simon Clixton, independent member.
Tim Kent, councillor Southend for Andrew Brown.
Councillor Jonathan Hutton, Southend Ward.
John Deezer, councillor Bury, North West.
Councillor David Rook, Southall Street Ward.
Councillor Robb, Newcastle.
Emilio Penthena, City Hall, Chief Executive Officer.
Alison Taylor, part of the committee.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number two is apologies for absence. Do we have any apologies?
Yes, Chair, as councillor Kenny noted, he's, councillor Brown has apologised and councillor Kenny substituted for him.
Can I just say we're checking with councillor Colm Renner whether she wasn't coming, so I'm just checking.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number three is declarations of interest. The House Committee has already declared reasons. Thank you. Councillor Goodwin, you're up. Okay, agenda item number four is minutes of previous meeting. Can I ask the committee if minutes are agreed as a prior accord? If not, do they have any questions? Councillor Hutton?
Thank you, Chair. On page ten of the, yeah, page ten of the minutes, that's page ten of the bundle. It says, with regard to the dedicated sports ground, point one, making really good progress, so that the three, one, two, eight million deficit did not happen. That should be 128 million deficit. It's just a matter of changing the three for a thousand seven hundred. Yes, I think we're, I mean Denise would be very glad it's not off, we've been in progress. And I also have a comment on point four as well. It says that there was some discussion regarding the interest rates used for borrowing on Bristol Beacon. The directors of finance states of the Heron City Year were independent consultants and would not put their own reputation at stake by inadequately reflecting the position. I did actually clarify that at the time by stating that the assumptions that went into the calculation were provided by the council and EY weren't actually taking ownership of those assumptions.
Okay, I need to sort of respond by indicating that it stays still therefore reporting if therefore the assumption around these are both, they would have stated so at the time.
I don't wish to get into an argument, but the EY report is quite clear. It states that they merely use the assumptions it would provide by the council. They're not taking ownership of those assumptions.
Okay, as you said, I don't want to get into discussion about it because the minutes are about what was stated in the meeting, will clarify what was stated in the meetings, so correct if needed. And then sort that, correct what was mentioned. Thank you. Okay, item, agenda item number five is the action sheet. Can I check if there are any comments on the action sheet? Councillor Goodwin?
Yeah, item number four, so which is corporate risk register update. And the comment was for viewing the suggestion that corporate risk rating would be used to analyse if the risk was always shown decreasing, which is also reflected in the minutes. But the response to it says the next report will now reflect presenting the C R R risks in ascending model of reference. And I suggested, no, that wasn't what we suggested. We suggested either doing it in. So I think, I made a comment, and I think it was because they were presented in order in which they'd first been added to the risk register, which is obviously an arbitrary order that doesn't help anybody. So either they need to be in order of, you know, department and things like that. And then preferably decrease the order of risk within that whole, decrease the order of risk overall, corporate risk register. So it's just the response doesn't reflect the request and maybe it's just a missed order.
Alison has noted that as we speak. Okay, before I move on to agenda item number six, this is public forum. I just wanted to note two changes to the, to the agenda items. The first one is our agenda item sixteen. It's a half completely forgotten the name of. Oh, it's the annual report of local government associate count on boardment. We agreed we had forward because there were some public forwarding questions and statements. And we didn't want members of the public feel they had to wait for the entire meeting before hearing the item that they had particularly interested. As it turns out, we don't have any members of the public coming along to ask those questions. However, having now dragged Ben Hookins in earlier day, I'm going to keep the agenda item at number sixteen so that he's not stuck here waiting because I asked him to come early. So we'll do agenda item number sixteen immediately after we do item number seven, this is the work program. The other announcement is that agenda item fourteen, this is the Q two corporate risk report update, has been removed from the agenda. This is because the report is not available in time for audit to be able to review it properly. The report will be, somebody want to...
The calculation that the corporate risk register will go to the what to calculate on the fourth of October, as it does with the public tonight. So at the time of the public, the what to compare was already ready. And we thought that the chair could put them not to have this discussion now because the papers will be available. What we'll do is once the papers are published, we'll secondly, the corporate risk report to the audit committee members. You will review it and then it's true you have the opportunity to identify corporate risk, but we want us to deep dive in the following meeting. Thank you.
And just to clarify, what I did want to do was to give the question that we've had an opportunity to review that report. I don't think there will be about not the opportunity to do so. Okay, moving on to public forum. As I said, we did have two questions and a statement. But none of the members of the public who vote in those questions, the statements are able to be with us today. They will receive words and responses to their questions and the statements will be noted by members of Audit Committee. Councillor Goodwin?
Yeah, one of the responses said it would be referred through the F O I process rather than coming. Would we also get responses in this committee to that it had been referred to the F O I process rather than being responded to as part of this committee? It was the John Hughes question.
I think the reason why it was suggested it would be an F O I response was because it wasn't necessarily a matter for the Audit Committee. So my assumption would be that the response that would not come back to us unless the member of the public decided to make it available to us. It's their F O I response, it will be up to them as to what they do with the response and the decision.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number seven, this is to note the work program. So can I ask audit members to note the work program that has published? Thank you. Okay, so we're now moving on to the substantive items. And most of these reports will be for note in the line of, I like that when we conclude our discussions. There are a lot of agenda items to get through, so I will ask for committee members to be as succinct as possible in their questions. And try not to spend too much time making statements. Because as I said, we do have a lot of agenda items. If necessary, there is an agenda item at the end regarding the Bristol Waste Act we caught with includes an exempt ended. When we reach that item, if necessary, we will move into a exempt session. Now, as mentioned earlier, agenda item number sixteen is being brought forward. So what I'm going to do is hand over to Ben Hookins. And Ben, please introduce yourself and then present your report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So Ben Hookin, I lead the Information Service within the council. Part of that includes our customer motions and complaints team. So as Chair mentioned, this is to discuss, sorry, to note the on boardment letter for this year for ongoing consideration as full council. Firstly, just to note that the on boardment has made no public interest declarations in this report. So the letter this year is generally positive compared to previous years. We've had twenty nine cases out of the hundred and eighteen that were reviewed by the on boardment. So they upheld twenty nine of those hundred and eighteen cases. As a council, we receive only seven thousand complaints throughout the year. The percentage is just under two percent in terms of the ones that the on boardment actually gets to deal with. So I think that's a really good figure in terms of the upheld complaints of the on boardment better than other local authorities of our similar size. So we're six and nine percent upheld compared to the other localities average of seventy two. And in maybe a quarter of our upheld cases, the on boardment has found that we'd already implemented the satisfactory resolutions. And again, this is compared to thirteen percent in other similar organisations. And of those recommendations, we've implemented a hundred percent of the recommendations made by the on boardment. And again, that is slightly higher than the ninety nine percent of other similar organisations. In terms of areas for improvement, there is one to note really, which is around payments or compensation to complainants. So there is a note in the on boardment around delays, in particular cases relating to payments. So the on boardment implements a new process to remedy that. In such that my team will make the payment after the service areas, which will ultimately remove the delay in the complaint receiving due compensation. And just in terms of one final note, in terms of the general upheld rate being slightly higher, it has been noted by the on boardment in their letter. And that's just due, we believe, to a changing process. And there is a note in the letter from the on boardment recognising that overall upheld rates are slightly high across the board. That's it from me, Chair.
Thank you, Ben. And just to also note out myself as Chair, I'd be reviewing the management board and the head of paid service also received copies of the letter ahead of the report being presented today. Landmine on, and the over to councillors for any questions. Councillor Goodwin?
Yeah, just trying to find the statistic for the upheld rate, so it will be seven. So the upheld rate sixty nine percent. And I'd assumed it was going to be like, what is it, twenty nine or thirty one over hundred and eighteen? So where's the sixty nine percent coming from?
So I'll just hand over to my colleague.
Hi, yeah. So the upheld rate of sixty nine percent is what the on boardment decides on the complaints. So sixty nine percent of the cases that they are dealing with are on.
But isn't, didn't they uphold twenty nine cases and investigate hundred and eighteen? So we don't need to have a hundred and eighteen, do we?
That's correct, yeah.
I've been a bit confused in the areas over the use of the statistics. It's proportion of how many of those solutions were provided with a satisfactory resolution, which was a hundred percent on the leak. And then the other percentage is one of the, I think there's a misunderstanding about the numbers. So perhaps there's something that you can email Ben after the words just clarify. I do think it's just about the numbers. Anybody? Councillor Kent?
Thank you, Chair. I noticed that we had an item on public business regarding this. Looking at the detail, it's something actually previously raised by people scrutiny last year. And this was a failure to pay teachers who provide service to children out of school. So I've noticed that a number of the paper actually states that they're raising a complaint to the local government on boardment about this. I noticed the reply from officers saying it's good to see work was being undertaken to rectify this problem. I am concerned though that the answer says that in July, the local authority took positive action when the People's Scrutiny Committee raised this with officers last year. I was just wondering what was done between us raising that and July that has left teachers in this city unpaid and students funding their provision cancelled because Bristol City Council apparently unpaid its bills in the recent time.
Okay, eventually councillor Kent, I suspect this may be a question that Ben may not be able to answer in detail.
So I'm aware of the question you were referring to, councillor Kent, that was provided to the service area themselves to respond to. Although submitted as part of the question regarding the on boardment's report, the question asked would be relative to the service area to respond to themselves. It's not something that I can comment on.
So I fully understand that you would be able to answer my point. I was wondering, I know internal audit had considered looking at this issue. I was wondering if that had actually occurred at the time.
Okay, it's on the plan. We do the work this Q three. Thank you.
Do you have any more questions from the members? Okay, Ben, thank you very much for that report and let's hope everything else goes smoothly. Here we're now moving on to agenda item number eight. This is the grand form to ISA two sixty report. Not sure if he's presented that. Oh, sorry, sorry.
No problem, thank you, Chair. So Phil, Beth, members, I'm Beth Ballas, I'm the external audit manager. I'm here to present the external audit findings report for twenty one, twenty two financial year in John Robert's absence. So I'm very conscious that this committee has seen a lot of reports from us over the last number of committees. Back in May, you received an audit findings report for the twenty twenty one financial statements year. And this audit findings report picks up a number of the areas that we would have looked at in that audit year in detail and continues the same work. So I don't propose to go through it in huge amounts of detail, but I'm more than happy to take any questions. I will simply pass on the key items. Are you all able to hear me well enough with the mic?
You didn't find that.
So the other report that we brought to this committee back in July was the value for money findings report, which is our auditors annual report. That covered two financial periods, twenty one, twenty two and twenty two, twenty three. And so that report is also relevant to this findings report that I am bringing to you today. Picking out just a couple of highlights, on page six of our report, we note our materiality that we set for the financial statements. This has not changed from planning, so when we submitted our audit plan to this committee, the materiality threshold was set at the same levels. We've not identified any issues that would cause us to amend that calculation of materiality, so it has remained the same. One page further on, we detail our group audit scope and risk assessment. I want to highlight to the committee that has been one change in our planned group audit work. That is that we are now planning to do specific targeted audit procedures in relation to Bristol Waste Company, given a few of the areas have increased and have tipped over our materiality threshold. Therefore, we will be undertaking procedures to assure ourselves of the material accuracy of those lines within the group financial statements. We then on the next handful of pages focus on our significant risks. Significant risks have been well judged for this committee and they remain the same as they have been in previous years. There are various findings that are reported and the position is reported as at the current point in time. Our work in a number of these areas is still in progress. While substantially progressed, we are aiming to conclude all of our audit procedures within the next month. So a lot of these areas have been substantially completed, as I mentioned. We then set out some of our key judgments and estimates, which just goes into a little bit more detail specifically around some of those significant risk areas. And then further in the report, we are pleased to be able to communicate on page fifty three of our report that we've not identified any significant matters that would cause us to change our audit approach, any matters in relation to fraud or issues related to related parties either. In terms of going concern, we are satisfied that the council remains a going concern in the public sector. There has been an amended consideration in relation to the going concern of any organisation in the last few years, which focuses on the delivery of services rather than on the financial position of an organisation. And as we know, there are no plans to abolish Bristol City Council. We are able to rely on that assumption that it will remain a going concern and it will continue to deliver statutory services for the foreseeable future. Slightly different to any commercial organisation, where there is focus on financial matters. We then on page twenty six and twenty seven and twenty eight even of our report focus on some of the value for money risks that were identified, some of the findings as a result of those. And as I mentioned, we've already represented our auditors annual report to this committee back in July. That report will remain in draft format. This is a key nuance to explain to the committee. It will remain in draft format until we are able to conclude on the twenty one, twenty two financial statements audit and the twenty two, twenty three financial statements audit. This is purely because the auditors annual report needs to comment on the conclusion of the financial statements audit, not because there are additional areas that we plan to undertake work on. So it is in final draft, but it will remain a draft through until we've completed those two years of financial statements audit. It is also worth drawing to members' attention on page twenty nine that we set out, we received one objection to the financial statements and we have substantially concluded our work on that objection. There are various processes that we have to go through in order to review and consider that objection and then agree the proposed response with various external bodies. And that proposed response is currently with external bodies for that agreement. So we hope to be able to finalise that work within the coming weeks. It is also worth flagging to the committee on page thirty that we note one area where we as a firm just consulted internally. There was no need for us to consult externally on this. But as members may have been aware from previous reporting, the chief executive of the council was a previous employee of Grant Thornton. In the audit department, we had no dealings with the chief executive, but we have reported within the audit findings report that we have confirmed we are able to continue as auditors and remain independent from this organisation. So we have ensured that we report that to you. We then set out various independence fees on the coming pages. And then from there onwards, our appendices cover various findings that we have identified as a result of our audit work. We've identified both control findings, which are set out in the action plan, which is appendix A. And we followed up period recommendations in appendix B. And then appendix C, details of current year findings. I don't propose to talk through any of those in detail, but I'm more than happy to take any questions through, Chair.
Thank you, Beth. And apologies for calling you, thank you. I don't know where that came from. Councillor Blackett, if you may, that would be good.
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. In section two about financial statements, significant risks, there seems to be all four of significant risks regarding property, land and buildings. I would have thought it would be critical, given the financial situation that we are in as, as are most councillors, that we are keeping a good grip on what we have always worth and exploiting it as best we can. Obviously, council housing is a service, but properties that we let out commercially, investment properties, you know, they're supposed to be bringing in revenue to help us, you know. So I'm a bit concerned that that seems to be a bit of a risk, seen as a risk. We should be really on top of that. And the other question that came up in what you're saying about the one objection, how much is it costing us as a council to deal with this one objection? And if it's a vexatious objection, are we in a position to recover the costs from the objecter?
You're happy for me to answer that, Chair. So take your first question in relation to all of the property related risks. There are two areas of our responsibility. Firstly, the financial statements and secondly, the value for money. So I think a lot of what you were focusing on is about the utilisation of those assets, performance of those assets. That primarily relates to our value for money responsibilities rather than our financial statements responsibilities. And this report mainly focuses on the financial statements responsibilities. So those significant risks relate to the valuation that the council carries those assets at in its financial statements. So rather than looking at it from the perspective of are they performing for the council, this work looks at it from the perspective of is the number that the council's finance team have put into the accounts accurate? So it's a slight nuance. Our value for money work does cover the performance of assets and we didn't identify any weaknesses in that area that required for putting within that audit findings report. So that was the property assets question. The second one on objections, the cost of work on an individual objection is based entirely on the time inputs required for us to respond to that. We try to keep it to a minimum. And in this particular case, we have liaised a lot with the legal team at Bristol City Council in order not to duplicate any work that they were undertaking already. So we've reduced what the fee would be through doing that. I apologize, I can't tell you the fee off the top of my head, the proposed fee. I think it may be set out in the appendix D of the report. But in terms of vexatious requests in relation to objections, we do have the option, if we can see that an objection is clearly vexatious, not to accept it at that first stage that we undertake work at. So in this particular case, we did not deem it to be vexatious.
Thank you, Beth. I believe the cost is in, and it's the, you have a comment for it?
Just, I mean, obviously, okay, so that starts with how far in the property, but obviously, again, we need to have a good grasp of how much what we have is actually worth. So, you have a comment there.
Thank you, councillor Luke Cox.
Thank you, Chair. I've got a couple of questions about the appendices that are attached. On page thirty eight, they talk about some I T risks. And there don't seem to be any responses to the management about two of the issues raised. The lack of process for actively reviewing I T service provider assurance reports and audit monitoring for Citica. They don't seem to be mentioned in the management response. Can we get some, can I ask some response on that, please? That would be good.
Yeah, yes, sure, you can get those responses. Sorry, I didn't notice it was there, just we can get those.
Thank you very much. The other one is on page forty two, which is talking about the cash reconciliation includes significant number of... the cash reconciliation includes significant number of reconciling items. Can we have some idea of how many others of items we're talking about and what the monetary value is associated with this assessment?
Okay, yes, we can, yes. I think when we talk about reconciling items, the way our cash works, it's a matching concept. So at the end of every year, there will be items that are going to be unmatched. We can certainly give you an item of value, yeah.
That'd be sort of the word significant phrase that I'm going to use for me. And on page forty eight, we talked about a WECO grant. Can I ask what that WECO grant was for? And it also talks about notes, and I can't find what they actually refer to, please.
Thank you, Chair. So, sorry, when we refer to notes, we leave the notes within the financial statements rather than the notes in our report. So there are note number eight and note number seventeen within the financial statements that are also coming next on the agenda.
Okay. What was the WECO grant for, please?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but I'm happy to go on.
We would have to look. I don't know either, I'm not, I'm not one of them either.
Do you have any more questions from councillors? Councilor Kent?
I've got one question, and I'm on point to make. A question, page seventeen of your report, using your number on the pages. It says here, commentary auditor view, this about financial statements and new issues and risks, it says the inherent risks which we identified in relation to infrastructure assets were an elevated risk of the overstatement of gross book value and accumulated depreciation figures due to lack of derecognition of replaced components. I'm very stupid here. Can you actually explain to me what that line means? Thank you.
Of course. So as a substitute on the committee, you won't have been necessarily privy to the lengthy conversations that this committee has had about infrastructure assets. So what we are saying here is we're responding to a national issue that was identified during the twenty twenty one financial statements audit for this particular council, and actually paused assigning opinions at all councils across the country for a quite a long period and resulted in the requirement of a statutory instrument being implemented by the government in order to ensure that we can move past this, which the slide details a little bit further. What that sentence is referring to is when, for example, a road is resurfaced in Bristol, what is not always happening is that the individual component part of the road that is being resurfaced is able to be separated from any other work that had been done when that road was first built, for example, or when it had most recently been resurfaced as a whole, meaning that you can't componentise easily a small chunk of work that's been undertaken in order to then identify how much of the old road is no longer an asset with a value to the council, which has meant that not just this council, but the vast majority of councils across the country have simply been adding to their infrastructure assets as and when they've spent money on the resurfacing of roads, just as one example, without being able to identify the amount that they would then need to remove as if it was being disposed of because it was no longer of any use.
I think it's only that they don't take in the value of the previous asset. Is that what you're saying to me? I'm trying to understand precisely.
With a nuance, in that it's more complicated than that. But if you want to put it simplistically, yes.
Okay, so that's all the good bits. Thank you. Right, I have one other point. Thank you for that. I think I understand. This is a general point, probably a more generally at Grant Thornton, and that is the way you compare your reports. I have some activity in the past, but obviously. So, I mean, a minor point, but the type font you use is very small and actually it's quite difficult to read, although these days with screens we can get around that a little bit. I wanted to point out that you guys have a colour assessment count that you use. Very interesting, you decide you have four colours you use, two of which are purple. One is dark purple and another is light purple. Yet these are the two edges of the spectrum of whether you think something is good or bad. And then you also use blue and grey. I think these are slightly unusual colour shapes to use, but I say it's more for general points, take that perhaps to Grant Thornton. But add to this, on page twenty one, we use green, which is not in the key of colour assessments. I presume we lifted a table from someone else who uses green, orange and red, which is standard practice in local authorities, rather than dark purple, blue, grey and light purple. I saw that has slight colour vision issues, not major. The idea of the three of the four colours are very similar to each other, as in purple, purple and blue, and grey isn't that far away. Is that just from Grant Thornton to think about in the future? Thank you.
I'm absolutely happy to take that away. It is a template that we all use so that we can standardise, but I will pass the message on actively.
No, thanks, Beth. I think it's a general accessibility issue that is something that we're trying to do, to develop work about this council information so that everybody is able to access important information. So thank you, Councilor Kent, for raising that. Do you have any other questions? Counselor, a good one.
Yeah, I think it's page twenty seven of your report, in your report numbering. I have this under the value for money procedure conclusions section, second part. So it's about the council's arrangements for securing financial sustainability was a leading term which obviously was made a risk. And it talks about looking at the twenty twenty one to twenty two budget, and then also talks about in the next procedure undertaken, looking at the twenty three, twenty four budget report. And the conclusion talks, says we've not identified a significant weakness in arrangements with twenty one, twenty two, but doesn't talk about any subsequent years, twenty two, twenty three or twenty three, twenty four. Could you talk about that, or is that coming somewhere else and I'll just miss it? Why is it not coming in this conclusion?
Yeah, so this conclusion relates only to twenty one, twenty two financial year, which is why we've explicitly stated that we didn't identify any significant weaknesses. The detailed findings from all of that work will be put into this committee back in July and will include the twenty two, twenty three findings which we've done as part of that joint value for money report. But within this specific, we wanted to try and keep it as clear as possible and refer only to the year of audit to which those findings related.
Thank you. And I think that is, so we do need to remember my ideas that as we give the orders, we do get a lot of reports sometimes about different years, particularly because of the delays that all the other parties face inside the law accounts. I'll now, thank you, Beth. I'll now move on to the next general item. This is a general item number nine, the statement of account for the year ended thirty first of March twenty twenty two. Oh, emphasise that. And Denise, says she, or was it Stephanie?
It's been me, thanks, Chair. So these are the accounts, updated version of the accounts, we saw them first in July twenty two. So we've made a number of adjustments as the audit progresses. There's still some work that's better mentioned to finalise, but substantially, these are the accounting that we're going to be asking you to provide dedicated authority to the chair to sign off. We've actually only made a small number of significant adjustments, which you asked for. Two of those adjustments are a direct result of changing the twenty twenty one accounts. So that's a change in the valuation of our assets and adjustments to the pension liability. The only other adjustments that we made, significant adjustments that we made are around ground income, which was incorrectly treated as other types of income. We've now moved all of that into ground income. And we will be actually adding a new line in the balance sheet to make that even clearer. It's not in the version you see, there's a little bit of work to be done on that, but that will be going in. And that's it, actually. That's the only changes that we've made since you saw the accounts in July twenty two. Perhaps there are any questions?
Thank you. Can you use any more, just to set? Well, I assume then, by the way, is isolate that adjustment is, we were asked to note that, so I'll take that as duly noted. And for this item, we are asked to approve the statement of account for the year ended thirty first of March twenty twenty two, and also delegate the chair signing of the letter of representation as soon as the audit has been satisfactorily concluded. But before we do that, I'm happy to open up to questions. Counselor, a good one. You said there was a small number of significant changes. Can I just check that there wasn't a significant number of small changes that had a material difference?
There will be other changes. There are the usual typos to sort out. And then when we finalise the numbers in the account and the audit's finished effectively, we'll then go back and update anything that needs updating, for example, in the narrative report. So there could be changes, but certainly nothing significant.
So? Just to clarify, on the basis of items eight and nine, are we anticipating then that the twenty one two accounts will be signed by the time we need to get in November?
The audit is out. Counselor Kent, and Counselor Hatton, follow me up.
Thank you, Chair. I've got a question on the dedicated schools grant, actually, which is in deficit. And that deficit is forecast to increase, I think, to ninety nine million by March twenty six, although there is a mitigation plan in place. And if that's successful, then the deficit would be sixty nine million. Now, I'm aware that there is statutory override in place until March twenty six. But I believe that if that isn't extended, then the deficit would need to be written off against the usable reserve. And I wonder which usable reserve it would be applied to. I had a look at the usable reserves and they seem to be sort of mainly earmarked for specific things. So I'd just like to get some clarity on that, please.
I mean, it's also fair to say, often that, that's a similar situation to appointments, that we have a look at property as well. So if the government were to send a favor, maybe does not continue that provision, there may be some major problems worldwide across the country. I don't know if Denise ultimately wants to respond.
I was going to say, firstly, I meet Denise Murray, Director for Finance. In relation to the DSG, the R record, the unmitigated position indicates a trajectory that rises to somewhere in the regions of hundred and twenty eight million. There is a big mitigation plan which brings the figures to an annual balance and actually establishes and starts to repay the actual historic deficit over a period of time. The council is in discussions with number bodies such as a DFE in relation to the DDB Centre Programme, and in terms of the proposals for mitigations. In addition to that, if we get to the year, and clearly there's lots of caveats, to some degree, you're asking me to provide some maturity in terms of all of the different forecasts, the whole committed fruition. So if we have our worst case scenario, and all of that comes to fruition, if we have mitigation plans and that delivers exactly what's stated, and similarly, if we have a statutory override that isn't extended, so all three very significant variables, then we do need to have a look along with our auditors in terms of what the proposals will be. Some of that will be reviewing the council's own financial position and the level of usable reserves the council has. Some of that will also involve the type of progress that is currently being made on the mitigations and the level of fruition in terms of the delivery of those plans. And secondly, look at some of the alternatives within the DSG to which the historic deficits would then be offset. The provision also has a caveat. So from the general fund perspective, we are unable to use general fund in order to mitigate that DSG. So again, there's lots of conundrums for, you know, for government departments to look at in terms of if they don't extend the override, they would want them to provide to review that. So still got a few years at the end before we get to that position and the decision has been made at this stage.
Okay, thank you for that, Denise. Very comprehensive answer. This may sound like a stupid question. The actual deficit on the DSG at the moment, has that been financed? Is it from sort of general cash services? I assume there's not a separate bank account which is overdrawn? I'm assuming it's...
Yeah, so it is, yeah. So just in terms of priorities, the deficit at present is actual spend is not forecast. We look at the net position within this financial year. I think it's tomorrow, there is about thirty seven million. That is actual spend that's already been used large on the overarching reserve positions and the balances of which the council has. That could be a combination of small balances, it could also be a combination of general balances. Those balances need to be replenished over time as well when they're required, and therefore then we have a position where we will need a cashable or a cash alternative in order to resolve the issue.
Thank you. To you.
Thanks. On page, I think seventy eight of the paperwork, there is a table with senior officer pay. I was wondering how that table works with the statement on pay, which comes from a different committee, which seems to always have a very different figure for the highest rate of officer pay. As in on page seventy eight, I think that's what it is, it states it's around two hundred and eighty thousand pounds was the pay for the highest officer. Yet in the pay statement, it only refers to the chief executive's pay. They try and give the table showing, I think, the Will Hutton rating regarding the lowest pay and the highest paid in the authority, and clearly doesn't use a figure of two hundred and eighty thousand pounds to come up with that. I was just wondering why the pay statement, I believe a legal document that the council has to produce, actually states something different to what the annual accounts of the council state?
I can comment on the pay statement, but the office remuneration in the account is, would be actually what, in the case of permanent employees, they were actually paid. And in the case of agency and interims, it's what they actually pay the agency itself. So there would be a bit more in that. But unfortunately, I can't comment on why there is difference, there is a difference. But obviously, the office remuneration is fully audited and...
So the accounts are accurate?
Yes, so all this information comes directly from pay, I guess. The on costs, yeah, on costs possibly, yeah. That might be the discrepancy, whether the difference is, yeah.
And so, that's a good point. The companies provide us with those breakdown of on costs, they provide us exactly what they're saying. An interim, who was perhaps coming by a company, was being paid rather than, and that goes into the pay statement, rather than the total amount we pay. We have those figures.
Yeah, and our own costs, of course. So boy, then eyes of remuneration, et cetera. That might be making a bit of a difference too, or something.
Well, some of that is reflected in the statement of the account, so at least pension is reflected.
Yes.
But to go back to that, do the companies then provide us with exactly how much is passed to the individual or not?
Yes.
Okay, so if we wanted to get that information, we could get that for the future?
Yes, yes, we can, we can, I will be here.
Any more questions? Okay, can I therefore ask for all the committee to approve the statement of the account for the year ended thirty first of March twenty twenty two? You all say aye? And can we delegate the chair signing of the letter of representation as soon as the audit has been satisfactorily concluded? And I'm assuming in some of those cases, it's the chair has encouraged the way, or can it be advised, Chair? So would the responsibility delegated for signing of the letter of representation to the... to the chair of audit committee? You all say aye? Thank you. Okay. General item number ten is next. This is the internal audit update report, which I believe is your baby, Senator.
Thank you, Chair. This report is very detailed, so I'll take it as read. It covers all of the reports that you want to see. We noted that some audits are reported as work in progress or in draft. As you know, that Q two hasn't ended. It is also inevitable that the finalization of some of the reports will still open to Q three, but then could be accepted, accurate arrangements to make sure that I'm able to give a decent analysis. You also see that a number of engagements we are reporting is ongoing. This relates to work that we do supporting the business throughout the year, relating to the actual and richly discussed in this committee. You also noted that the agreement with options are on target, but there's been a lot being undertaken, a lot of people led by CLP to clear the certain actions, and the focus is also on the partial implementation. Secondly, the other part of this report relates to those two management, two views that give you the choice of opinions, which are appendix two and three. This relates to agents staff appendix two, the management appendix three. Chair, I'll stop here. I'll take questions on appendix one only before we move to the digital discussion around the other two appendixes. Are any questions on appendix one in my other report?
Do you have any questions related to appendix one? Counselor.
Thank you. Phil, can you introduce the agent staffing, please? Thank you.
Hello, Philies. It's an audit manager, I'm going to introduce the two exception reports, starting with the agency staffing. The council has a contract with a civil realization to supply agency staff. We took a review of that contract and its application within the council. Positively, we found that the vast majority of agency staff were being sourced by that contract. When we looked deeper into the application of the guidance, which HR produced for individual managers to obtain the staff from that contractor, we found there were some issues of non-compliance. We've sent those out in our report. Colleagues from HR are here to respond to the report. So I'd like to hand over to those colleagues.
Thank you. We did that, can we move on?
Hello, I'm Seth Griffin. I'm the Director of Workforce and Change, and I'm joined by James Burrispoon, Head of HR. So in terms of management response, we certainly welcome this audit to the focus of the areas where we knew improvements needed and the oversight of procedures for the engagement of agency staff. And the use of agency workers does provide us with flexible and temporary cover for a wide variety of vacant or specialist roles. And they can certainly be a really helpful talent pipeline for attracting people into your permanent work with the council. I'm spending on agency staff as about four percent of the overall pay bill. So as Phil said, the current contract is managed by a managed services provider, and central guidance and internal contract management is provided by HR. Individual managers are responsible for recruitment using our contract, subject to recruitment approval process. So in response to this audit, my own observations, we are in the process of updating guidance for managers, making it much clearer about HR's role in central oversight, and also tightening our analysis of the information that we get back from the supplier. Also, you'll note that there's been some queries of, you know, changes to charge rates or pay rates during contracts. Again, we're tightening our approach to that and making sure there's stronger HR oversight in that. Also, we're in the process of procuring our agency staff contracts. We're just about to get underway with that. So this audit has been quite timely and will just help us include some of these actions and recommendations into the new specification that will ensure we've got a tighter approach built into the new contract going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I finish with questions, a question of my own. You, it was mentioned about agency staff being roughly four percent of the pay bill. Is that reasonably consistent across the council whole? Or are there certainly parts of the council where we tend to rely more on agency staff? And are there areas where we have a larger proportion of problems with non-compliance in general?
So in terms of how we use agency staff, that can be where there are hard to fill roles. We have a lot in our business support areas, this is our commercialization. Hard to fill roles such as social workers is another area where we use it a lot. I think in terms of the non-compliance, I don't think we would necessarily say that's a particular area. I think it's across the board, generally tightly required. But I'll defer to James, in case you have any further detail.
Okay, thank you. Counselors, Counselor Goodwin.
Hi, are you using agency employees as differentials from interim employees? And I guess interim is where the post is permanent, but the person is interim. Whereas agency is the post is temporary. So if that's correct, and then agency is four percent, what percentage of the salary budget is interim?
I'm afraid we're guntic, Counselor, of using the terms somewhat interchangeably. And there's a wide variety of terminology used to describe agency workers, including interns, contractors, locals, et cetera. So I'm afraid we don't have a breakdown by those particular, by the particular non-clutch.
So before we respond, I think, just one point I would also like to make is because we are moving over to a new governance system, we're also evolved and different administration. I think there has been a move towards some more interim appointments than we would possibly do if we were not changing the administration types. I think it's just usual to be just known that, but please go on with your question.
Yes, and just to confirm then, that four percent agency staff includes interim payments?
Counselor Woodhouse.
Thank you, Chair. I had a quick look at the guidance of Global's website, and I can't find an ethics statement. Can we have some documentation to show that Global share the council's values, and particularly particularly that modern slavery in this context?
I can certainly ensure the chair that information is supplied.
Thank you.
Chair, with this committee, just to make sure.
I don't see why not. I would see those items as being publicly available documents. They certainly would feature during the course of a procurement exercise.
Thank you very much. No any more questions? Counselor Haggard.
Thank you, Chair. I think that Counselor Goodwin's question is probably related to my question. In order to hire agency staff, does there have to be a vacancy within the organization structure? Or do managers have some discretion to recruit agency staff outside of that to deal with, say, peaks of workload?
Yes, they do have that discretion, Counselor. Normally, we would expect them to be hiring agency workers to cover the posts on our permanent establishment. But sometimes there may be a superior post required, as you say, in order to deal with a peak of work or a long-term absence.
And just to add to that, we do have recruitment approval process. So if somebody wants to take on an agency worker, that needs to go through a dispensation process. So the director would have oversight of that, as would our finance and HR business partners, so that we can be sure that we've got the budgets and the recruitment business case to take that along.
Thank you. Any more questions? Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to debt management.
Thank you, Chair. The council introduced a new corporate debt management policy with effect from Thursday, April two thousand and twenty two. We reviewed the impact and the content of that policy. What we found was that the impact had been limited for a couple of reasons, one of which was that was to do with COVID and the diversion of a number of deputy company staff into other duties because of COVID. That had also delayed some work on the development of new systems, documentation, et cetera, which meant that the policy had not been implemented in full. What we found was staff had returned to their duties in terms of from January two thousand and twenty three onwards, and that worked of then being put in place to implement the policy. However, at the time of our review, it was too early to see what the impact of that policy was. So we produced our report. We made, I can find a number of current issues with debt management and the way it was currently being implemented. And financial services are here in order to respond to that report.
Thank you.
Afternoon, my name is Brian Pat. I'm head of Fred News and Benefits, and my colleague, Kevin Smith, the team collection manager, is here in case he questions to get the technical form. So from my perspective, a couple of the things I would say start to just set, but I will just reiterate them, so anywhere I am. Cabinet previously corporate debt management policy back in January twenty two, due to implemented in April twenty two, and that policy published on the council's website is in the public domain. So as alluded to, we do welcome support, but it's not due to check where we are regarding this. It wasn't followed in full for the first year, mainly due to the impact of activities, lack of resource, and as Phil mentioned, some of the COVID grant schemes, quite a tale. And we need to review our management processes, software and documentation. So it would be fair to say that twenty two, twenty three did not lead to more effective debt management. And also during that period, recovery was suspended through the pandemic, we should be aware. And we also found evidence amongst BCC of inconsistent approaches, which we've now worked hard to address with collaborative working with colleagues in areas such as value service care, or counter to the new activity, optimized with the policy and internal audit, we're aware of that. We've also initiated a debt recovery action plan. This was only launched probably back six, four years ago, so it's still very early days we're part of that. But amongst the early actions that we've done there is a proposal not to limit the recovery documentation that we've got, and we're going to progress in all necessary cases, if necessary, to enforce the measure, but we are making sure that all vulnerability checks are carried out first. We've made some software changes, and resources now being prioritized and placed on this work. We've also managed to negotiate an increase in the availability of court slots. I'm sure you all see this as a national issue post-pandemic, but we've managed to ask for more than our fair share in order to prioritize this work. And improving our debt position is seen within my service as now our very highest priority. Councils accumulated around fourteen million, having debtages over two years old. We feel there's a significant risk of motion for saving debt will not be recovered without an additional focus. But with our recovery process is now back to business as usual collection, there is certainly expected to be a risk. There may be a slight increase in the level of write-offs, but not because we are actively pursuing debt, simply because these cases may not be given sufficient priority during pandemics. It is worth pointing out that all older debts are not uncollectible. We've already had some success collecting older debts, they will then apply to the recovery plan debt. And with regard to any questions, any safety questions?
Thank you, Brian. Counselors, Counselor Deeterson and Counselor.
Just to make one point, which may or may not be helpful. You said that in terms of the request of more court time in order to pursue the matters. At the moment, the cases from the case of the city in the magistrate's court, three magistrate cities, it might be worth asking for the option of a single justice system, which could potentially give you three times the opportunity to get cases.
Thank you, very much. Counselor.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, the figure of fourteen point seven five million debt which is over two years old, is that across all debt types, council tax, council receivable? Is it the council's activities?
Exactly, council. That figure relates to a council receivable debt only.
Right, okay. And has it been fully provided for? I'm sure at least part of it's been provided for, but has it been a hundred percent provided for in the bad debt provision?
I haven't got those calculations to hand, but my colleague sort of looked at it.
Tony. Yes, all debt over three years old is provided four percent, and then there's a sliding scale depending on age and collectivity, et cetera.
Okay, okay, that's, yeah, that's fine. And, yeah, so there was one point one million of allocated income that required manual matching to debts, hence the customer accounts. Of this, two hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and thirty payments were conceived more than one year ago. So is there a danger here because of a delay in allocating payments to customer accounts? It's action, the recovery action, perhaps legal action could be taken against against organizations if certain people or individuals have already paid, but the payment hasn't been allocated to the customer account on the council receivable action?
There are two parts to that, Counselor. One is, you're quite correct. If a payment doesn't get allocated, there is the potential for the actual state condition reminder notice, et cetera. What we generally find is that if that does happen, the customer will contest a statement like payment. On this date, et cetera, we trace the payment, allocate the payment, we apologize, and that's done. The other part we have is that we sometimes receive a duplicate payment, so we said that in the last, if a thorough payment is made the same amount, obviously that payment is unmatched and can be allocated because there isn't a debt. So we're working with colleagues in business support services who now process it based to allocate those unmatched payments. And it makes significant progress in doing so. What that does mean is that those payments are now shown in our council's financial system, our council receivable, and we're likely to go through and potentially refund those payments because it would duplicate it.
Thank you. Is most of the matching an automated process, or is it partly manual?
I would, I don't know, is the obvious answer. I imagine fine lines is always basic based on business rules. So if someone quotes accounts, has to pay down with a payment, et cetera. What we have is that, I was sort of, you know, I like to diss myself earlier, people will make a payment and just say, payment. And it's very difficult with any further information to allow. And that's where the manual intervention is needed to be surprised. Thank you. On that last point about, you know, people just book payment, I don't think you can with online payments and, you know, make it conditional so that unless you enter the correct date and the correct way, you can't progress. And if you make sure that any letters asking people about, you know, And if you make sure that any letters asking people about, you know, mind people about stacking debt, say, please quote this reference in, you know, then if you don't quote the reference, and we've got an error message saying, please enter the reference from this, the letter, you know, that would help potentially solve the problem stuff, people paying and then their money getting lost somehow. The other question that I want to raise is about the use of bayels, because I know that the cardboard layer has did a lot of work on trying to get the council to reduce the use of bayels. Because at times it can be excessive and also there's a cost to it. So is anything, is that being progressed? Are we seeing reduce, reduction in the bayels being used or are we still setting that on rates of council taxes?
I'll take the first question first, thanks, Chair. The online payment portal does ask for a reference number. So the, it's a payment to where people have made payments, they're like, okay, just online payment. They'll make standing or payments, et cetera, which up to them obviously to quote a reference. Although, as you say, our documentation does say, please quote your reference number, reference number, et cetera, when they're making payments. So we do our best to minimize that happening. Moving to enforcement agents, you'll be aware, some time ago, we introduced a method with that collection process where we go to significantly reduce the use of enforcement agents across council tax initiative. That was successful prior to pandemic. Obviously, the pandemic has come along, as Graham was saying, probably was suspended for some time and we're not catching up. But we are still a very large group service, where customers who hold debts can contact us. And we're going to use them through sectors to try to deal with any money or financial vulnerability issues they may have. But of course, where people won't pay, and we have no alternative, we do need to still use enforcement agents to ensure we're being viewed by the council as collective.
Counselor, call me.
Thank you, Chair. Can I just check, soft reminder means what I think it does. It's a notification to the debtor that they have to pay, but without any, to actually take them anything. When I say how long has the policy been in place now, since it was formally started? I had April 2022. And has that started yet?
Yes, we are issuing soft reminders across all debt types. I guess it did come in April 2022.
Okay, because one of the things, which is so much in different places in the report, I want to make sure I'm looking at the right section. It looked as though that hadn't been rolled out along with the rest of the policy.
It had, the corporate debt management policy covers all debt types that the council. And this audit was primarily about council receivable. In fact, council receivable is one of the first parts of the service to receive the what we call merged file software.
So in our report, it says under 1.5, the software reminder stage of debt collection, set action policy had not yet been actioned. And that the policy was misleading and it does not indicate the software reminder stages are discretionary. That suggests too long a thinking in my head, one is that it just hadn't happened yet, but also that the need for it was being, I don't know if it challenged, but it was discretionary, that wasn't set action of the policy. Could you just clarify that?
So software reminders themselves are discretionary in all, and in the way that we operate. However, the policy, debt management policy makes that mandatory. So we do issue those and we do follow the policy. This audit took a while to complete. And initially, we may not have been fully following all sort of software reminder stages or the stages of the second policy. But by the time, by the time the audit was completed, everything was moving through the appropriate stages as necessary.
So just to be clear, in 1.8, where that's implementation of software reminders for social care had misdeemed implementation dates. That was after the completion of the report, but before now, in other words, that is now happening now, definitely.
Nurtled by what you've brought up, social care, it's last week.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any more questions? No, thank you. Thank you, Kevin, thank you, Graham, thank you, Phil. It now calls upon audit committee to note the report and to note the internal audit summary report and take assurance from management regarding the issues highlighted in the report. Can I oversee what I use, please? Thank you. We now move on to agenda item number 11. This is the internal audit Q3 priorities and our management team.
Thank you, Chair. In some of the reports states our proposed Q3 priorities to be agreed with the audit committee consistent with the current planning that we're to have created. We developed this proposal following consultative management and based on our audit analysis. We will notice that in Q3, more time to financial control and governance, reflecting the need to ensure that our key controls are functioning effectively. Will you support management's implementation with the agreed management actions? As previously requested, we provide the table within the reports to indicate how important this is in Q3. The proposed Q3 priorities are in appendix one. Just to finish off, I believe that we have such changes to sources to believe of those proposed priorities. And we've also given new appendix two, which provide the list of other reviews that we may consider to locate in Q4. But this will be agreed to audit committee in the November meeting, through the schedule, it would be committed. Thank you, Chair.
Counselors, do you have any questions? Counselors.
Thanks. I noted earlier, you replied to me saying, quarter three, you could be looking at the payments to teachers who are working externally, providing essentials with education. You're a very busy man, you're routine is a lot here. I couldn't see it in the list, I'm just wondering if you could point me to it, to reassure me.
Counselor, if you go to our previous, to the previous report that I had, and agenda number 10, appendix one, you will see that that report you're referring to is being scopped as you speak now.
It's the one which refers to the report being completed.
It's unscopped, that's the one being scopped now. So if you go to agenda number 10, appendix one, there is a report, there's a review there which we said is being scopped. And that's good, I'm paying to you there.
Oh, it's been scheduled, is it?
Yes, it could be, yes, but it will be finalized in Q3.
Right, I'll try to thank you.
Counselor, whereabouts?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, a question which is slightly related to what Counselor Kent just raised. On appendix one, there are 30 or 40 things that you're doing here. Can we have another column with a number for each of these things, so we can actually reference them properly? So you could have said, go to line number 12, Counselor Kent, it'd be much easier for us, I think, please.
That's okay, Counselor, we'll do that. It's up to you, that's fine, forget, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Senator, thanks for the report. You've taken us through the process you've gone through to put the plan together. But you've actually asked us to be clear that it addresses our assurance needs and that it's what we would expect. And we don't have the corporate fiscal report here today, in essence, to be able to look at that. So I'm actually going to turn the question back on you. Are you content that in terms of your process, this identifies a significant audit for quarter three? And that there are no significant gaps? Can you tell us if there was any barriers put in your way to doing any work in quarter three?
So Chair, I think I'm convinced that we have tried to look at all the sources of assurance, including the corporate register, as well as the services registers, as well as strategic management as well. Nothing in terms of completing the work in Q3. I don't think there are barriers, but I think when I come to the committee in Q4, I need to recognize that there's a lot of work that's happened within the business in terms of planning for next year. So we just need to make sure that I will strike the right balance between the work that we need to do, the timing, and maybe sure that we provide assurance as required.
Thank you. And it's fair to say, one of the reasons we've worked to the quarterly, looking at our business, we'll say that we can, we have to change it as soon as possible.
Yes, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Just under financial control, some things scheduled for quarter three is savings, but it turns to twenty twenty four. And obviously, one of the things that came out of that return order, it's that you could, it could sound like the definition of savings used. I was just wondering if that includes any follow up from that internal audit finding. Fantastic. And the other thing that's just been troubling me, it was the slide since last audit committee, is that any of the proposed savings that we used as part of our business case for prudential borrowing, and they had involved savings that might not have been, not the definition of savings. Would it include anything like that if such a thing had happened?
So I think to respond in a way, what we do is that we know that the council has got a list of savings that needs to be delivered. So our job, our job is to ensure that what has been approved by council, the savings have been delivered. So that's what we do. So we have a list of those savings and then we check the progress of those savings. So anything within that bracket will be considered. But I'm sure, I think we probably crosswalk in terms of the issues that we last time, in terms of the definition between what a saving is. I think it was an area of the council that possibly I think say that, but I don't think it was the problem in the council. But if there is a misunderstanding within the reporting, then we raise it, but I am not sure of the, why it says we will look at F in relation to the savings. But I wouldn't, I just bet that there is something like that in future. I think it was just a mis, a misunderstanding with the definitions and through discussions, please, welcome in.
Thank you. I think there's a slightly different question that was being raised. One, you're nice and to delivering savings, two, which related to business case and production of business cases, which may or may not be attributed to a saving, the one you were talking to wasn't, but I think it's about the robustness of business cases, which may be some of the projects, sure, it's work, it's generally, I think, I'm assuming there has been activity.
Thank you, Graham. Do you have any further questions? Okay, in that case, as Simon said, we are asked to review and approve the report. Can I say that report as reviewed and approved? Thank you. Okay, we now move on to agenda item 12. This is everybody's favorite, Treasury Management Report. Sorry, I just didn't hear what's going to say, Simon, over too much.
Good afternoon, Chair. My name is John Case, and so I'm the manager, but I'll cover this report off today. So this is the annual treasury management report 2022-23. And it's probably just promoting, I won't give you the details, but I'll just pull out a few things which may be relevant. So just to confirm, all the treasury activities that the council has during the year will be accordance with the farthest strategy and government regulations. As you probably may know, the council has a very prominent problem that we need to have a financial plan. It did plan to borrow 65 million in 2022-23. That primarily to support the financing of the capital program. However, the council also has a policy deferment borrowing, one that has significant treasury balances. During the year, we have aggregate finances of, just take the 200 million, at the end of the year, a hundred and sixty million pounds. This whole fact minimizes our net financing costs because if we did borrow them, they are higher than what we could invest it up. It also reduces our risk of council debt, category control, because if you have less balances doing that. Insurance in the pack, which shows a pretty great amount of debt. So as at the end of the year, we had 446 million pounds of external debt, of which the majority is with an organization called the Federal Doing Board, which is a government agency. And five million pounds of debt until the end of the year. Within our debt portfolio, we have market loans of which 70 million are LBOs. So it's been impressive last, last few years. Just to, you know, we continue to review all our loans, including LBOs, to see if we can repay them without penalty. Just to, to remove the debt from our debt portfolio. As I've mentioned, we had investments of, had we landed here 160 million. The average rate of return for these balances was 1.9% compared to last year's, that was super par, which was 2.3% during 21-22. But for other reasons, base rate increased from 0.1% to 4.25% of giving, due to inflationary pressures, which we had greater returns available from public accounts, money market funds, and I deliver priorities. All I would say is that when we invest our funds, they are highly basic organizations, primarily to ensure that we are able to act where it's needed. So if there's any questions, we'll take it.
Thank you, John. Didn't know how we should quickly swap that around to you to respond. I know one quick question on my part, there's been, it's an obvious question because there's been, the process has been discussed about some local parties, and they appear to be mainly concentrated in Surrey for some reason, have very high levels of debt compared to their income. I'm assuming that we are nowhere near citrated as fare form is there for instance, where they have debt that's 90 times their income?
And compared to our courses, we have no level of debt compared to one population in central Australia.
Okay, thank you, Counselors. Hands away, I want to go, Counselor Goodman first, Counselor Woodhouse, and Counselor Blackness.
Yeah, mine's really quick, can you say what a LBO is?
So a LBO is a type of debt, the creation stands for lender option, borrower option. So it's a lot of, so basically what that means is we could take on some option debt, say, for 50 years, but there'd be options that the lender can change the rate. And if the lenders start to change that rate at regular intervals, say, or mainly five years, they can increase the rate. But if they chose to exercise that option, then council will have the option to actually repay that debt at the bar. And we have a policy where if a lender decides to exercise that option, then we repay that debt. So we monitor those loans and make sure we've got cash available should that option ever arise. So interest rates have been low for many, many years, obviously increasingly over the past 24 months. So those options may come forward now in interest rates, where the interest rate may make a more advantageous, which is trying to change the rate.
Thank you, sir. I finished by the side, LBO is one of those things that seem like a good idea, but that type for somebody who turned out maybe not, because that's a good idea later. Counselor Woodhouse.
Thank you, Chair. I note that Cabinet gave approval for loan to finance on Bristol, work for Bristol Beadle in January 2023. Is that factored into the table that's on paragraph eight? And when did the loan actually start and what was the interest rate?
So if you're referring to the capital program where it's financed by borrowing, then it's part of the pack of something, a table which sets out capital funds requirement. So any financial borrowing needed to support the capital program would effectively increase our capital financing requirement. our capital financing requirement. But we only allow borrowing externally from the marketplace as and when we need to borrow cash. So at the moment, because we've got some cash balances, there's been no request to borrow externally at this point.
So John, can I just clarify, I think when this is standard here is, I think there's been an assumption that a particular amount of money was borrowed for that particular purpose, but that's not the case. The money, however, when it got borrowed in, we think I went with exactly that. That's right, yeah. Do you agree?
I think I understand now. Thank you.
There you go.
Yeah, okay. So interest rates have gone up, but I still think, you know, if we're getting, if we're paying debts about four point four eight or, or higher, but all we're getting is one point nine in interest for our investments, that's a bit pitiful. I mean, you don't get better and better. So surely we could be getting better interest rates on our investments.
Yes. So when, for the year, interest rates started up quite low. So what happens is it just improves through this, that's our architecture for the whole period of one point nine. Obviously, we would have, when interest rates change, core accounts doesn't actually change as well at the same time. We take a long time to progress. So to try maximum as our instrument, we actually ladder our investments on, making for a bit longer duration to try and catch up on rising interest environment. But one of the paragraphs is very difficult to keep pace with the interest rates which rise that quickly. So a part of benchmark, part of that, it's around, we run live authorities and we compare, I mean, in some places compare favor against other, other live authorities.
Okay, thanks. Please, I mean, I do think that, you know, we do need to be, you know, as long as we're keeping an eye on that and actually getting, getting the best return we can, I think that's really, given how tight those are financially, that's really, really important.
Yeah, we actively manage our portfolio. So we assess the products available in market mix and we have made use of very good financial advisors to achieve that goal.
Please, come on.
Thank you. Yes, I really want to, and maybe the question that has to happen to ask of the, the questions that have been repeatedly asked in relation to Bristol Beacon and the financing of Bristol Beacon is in this report. So in reality, it does reflect the points that John's made, but it's not that the councils weren't borrowed. So whilst we have financed the projects, along with a range of the projects, the level of borrowing has been very minimal. And actually, in reality, that's reflected in the rate of returns. I think we have explained that, that really this report actually articulates that much better than what we would do. It's very clear that whilst we are spending our capital program, we're not externally borrowing. We are utilizing our own cash reserves to finance the positions and therefore it's the opportunity cost. And then the average debt available that we may want to borrow in the future, which is usually the rate of return. But all of the details are in this report.
Thank you, Vinnie. Jonathan.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, it's, it's clear from the balances at the end of March twenty two, March twenty three, the investment balances, it, the council will need to borrow cash in this financial year. And the amount that's in the treasury strategy is, for this financial year, is sixty five million. Is that still your expectation of the amount that the council will need to borrow in this financial year?
So it's part of the treasury strategy that went to the council in, in February this year. I can't read out the exact figure that we set that we would need to borrow to finance that program, but I think probably in the region of a hundred million. But that would be dependent on how, how well the capital program progressed, in terms of the team's financial borrowing and the planned use of, I suppose, of balances such as reserves provisions and working capital. So currently, I'm pretty sure we haven't borrowed any funding yet to support the capital program. But I can anticipate that we will be borrowing during this year, but not to the same extent of what we're saying in treasury management.
Thank you. So you, you don't anticipate that it will be as much as sixty five million that will need to be borrowed in this financial year?
Yes. So sixty five million relates to twenty two year end, twenty two, twenty three. Yes, that's the annual report for last year. So for twenty three, twenty four, then the treasury actually can anticipate something in the region of a hundred million. I think it will be borrowing at that level, but we will be borrowing at some stage around the right agenda. The value could be dependent on how much, how much we need to borrow, depending based on treasury investments that we've gotten from today.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. Were you, was, is the plan to draw it from the public works load board? And are the arrangements in place to actually draw it down? I assume we need to go through a process of, of satisfying the public works loads board with all sorts of information requirements, like compliance with covenants and that sort of thing.
So in terms of borrowing and borrowing or duration, then we would carry an option of payment, which we could ask for value for the council, in terms of its balances. And that could be either through public works loan board or other market debt. Normally, the benchmark is public works loan board. So that would be a target for any market debt, should, should they be available. There is a formal process in place which contains initial processes, and any long term extreme borrowing has to be signed off by the section of the board. And the routine for borrowing from the PWLB is quite straightforward. There's numerous questions that you need to ask to satisfy, and not borrow, not borrow for a capital purpose. And it normally takes maybe five days to get the money back on the, when you make the request. Whereas if you build some market debt, it's a lot more work on that long duration.
Thank you, yes. I know from experience of, of drawing down from the market, it's, it can be quite a, a long and convoluted process, but it's, and there's all sorts of requirements satisfied. But obviously, it's a, a much more straightforward process than drawing down from the PWLB. So that must be advantageous as far as managing your liquidity position is concerned. I know that you've got cash on deposit currently, just going back to stage, do you have an indication at this point of, of how long you're likely to draw down for and the, the rate it's likely to be paid for?
So the treasury strategy sets out the values involved in what cash we need to borrow to support the capital program. And that's why we're on a long timeframe. In terms of the plan for external borrowing, we will plan, because of current interest environment, to borrow relatively short, maybe one or two years, as the expectation is that long term makes for a full, over the next twenty four, thirty six year period, at which point we would then refinance these loans at lower rate. So that's our, our plan strategy at the moment.
Thank you. That clearly makes sense. In terms of the cash that you have on deposit currently, a one point nine, I know that you place security as the most important feature. You place that above, above actually the, the return that you receive. What's the sort of average term that you have, that you hold cash on, on best, on deposit for? Because obviously, you know, you have to balance security with, with liquidity and return. And return is obviously less important than security and liquidity. But what's the sort of that average period that we have cash on?
Jonathan, I'm worried that we're going down quite, into quite a level of detail at the moment. I mean, these may be questions that you might want to get responses by email from.
That would be absolutely fine, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Kennedy.
Hi, sorry. I think my question will be a lot bigger. I'll just follow from Ketsu LaHaka about planning borrowing. As you said, twenty two, twenty three was sixty five million which you didn't need to borrow. You took that from cash. Twenty three, twenty four, the treasury strategy, which was approved in March twenty twenty two, with your paper, has projections of two hundred million. The savings probably more late to be close to a hundred million, I understood. And then twenty four, twenty five has projections of up to a hundred eighty million pounds of borrowing. Obviously, the treasury strategy would have been written, which would have been March twenty twenty two, we're probably facing stills for the lower, lower level interest rates. So now they're far higher. So that would appear to be that just to, to be able to fund that debt would be around an extra six million pounds of revenue funding. Has that been factored into our budget? As in, well, we came up with treasury strategy a year, eighteen months ago, obviously interest rates were far lower. Now they're far higher, and that will have an impact on the revenue budget, meaning we don't have to find another six million pounds or so to service the, the proposed borrowing for the next eighteen months. Have those conversations happened?
Yeah, the previous position happens by the NTP, which would be the next.
Yes, we were just educating that we do have a profile built into the NTP and the budget that was approved by council, which I assume would peak desperately at four point five. We're increasing that margin in the, as part of the NTP that we're forward for twenty four, twenty five, within the area towards, I think, around the HRA, lots of business in the HRA. Most of the debt is with most of the thirty year plan. And we're currently doing a refresh of the thirty year business plan and will incorporate all of the increases in interest rates and sort of then see the, if there's any needs to make to the HRA programs.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any more questions? Okay, in that case, we are asked to note the report. Can I say that report is due in a minute? Thank you. Thank you, John and Richard. But now we move on to a general item number thirteen, which is Risk Management Annual Report, which I believe is the upcoming.
This is the. This represents the summary of the risk management activities during the two thousand and twenty two, twenty three. It covers the background to the council's approach and progress being made against the improvements, the risk maturity of the organization. So embedding risk management, of course, it takes time. And during two thousand and twenty two, twenty three, I'm having a talk about it in this, this management day, reasonable actions in an improvement from the two thousand and twenty one, we've had a shot. So we move a step ahead between two thousand and twenty two, twenty three. And this will also provide transactional, what the big actions taking. Also, that was what we're going to improve the following as well. During two thousand and twenty two, twenty three, from Asia, the council managed twenty seven threats, whether the corporate risk register foot fired its origin, seven improved, while twelve remained the same during the year, while the risk within the current sector now. During the year, six new threats were added to the corporate risk register and three were just allocated by appropriate. There were also two opportunities reported, of which one was completed in addition to the three external contingency threats that were added to the corporate risk services. Activities during the two thousand and twenty two, twenty three continued to develop council's approach, moving the council towards managing risk management and improvement. The funding activities were undertaken quarterly, reporting key risk, strategic risk. We continue to manage, maintain, communicate risk management to the source to share. Providing risk management guidance, support to all, to staff and members. Pentagonal risk was further embedded. The Pentagon was supposed to send this on, please. With the Pentagon risk management system was further embedded, by non bespoke awareness sessions, we conducted, refreshed risk maturity workshop with DMTs at similar levels on the EDS. Also, we implemented the twenty twenty one, twenty two, that particular evaluation. So that's completely done. As part of the, and all of that should be the entire, the improvement. So we have a, below table one, which includes both internal management actions and risk management activities for the year particular, taken before. We plan to refresh the strategic framework, bound the dividends in Q4, twenty two, twenty four, and our risk based threshold and assessment at about one Q1, as a coordinate to look at the quality of this report. Time lines of risk updates and escalation, so carrying out of data in risk handling, and a section that's actually copied every Q1, and also ongoing as necessary. And also incorporated risk handling induction. This, this now be meant to Q3, because of resources, of course, and then. The monthly care to service dashboard seems to be more to Q3, just as we remain external and to effective use. But monitoring the extension of action data is actually completed now. Every risk of which we've been, what to indicate have been due to, every risk now, we went through actions, indications, comments and assurance of what's been done. And we've seen a positive improvement and we understand how we can do action, effective controls. Explore system, reconfiguration, that's going on, as we speak, and we hope to complete that by Q3, with including retainers of internal risk system. Carry out of the risk awareness session, that's an ongoing session, the risk interconnectivity. This is very interesting. We're starting looking at dependencies in relationship with all this. So we can understand the portfolio of the risk within the council. So we see what's happening in the directory that's affecting what, and maybe time to see that work well, and the interconnectivity of risks. Also, integrating risk KPIs, have raised a collaborative effort by the council to be able to put risk information in the generation dashboard. So again, that's a project going on, hope to be completed by Q4. Although that's outside our control, so watching the numbers, we're only contributing to that. Further initiatives like risk communication, there's a plan to have an online video introduction for that, that we hope will be able to implement. And also the monthly sales risk update now from this month, and perhaps, sorry, because we actually, once we want, at any moment, to look through the risk profile, within the form of your high risk and low risk of the council, and to do that, so there's assurance of what this does, and to be able to make our, and assurance what they're going to be to the tracks or take about it, those opportunities. Back coming for two thousand and twenty, that's what we have.
Yeah, thanks. Table one, at the end of it, you've got an asterisk. And it says reviewers underway but require extra resources to implement this action. And there's quite a few items within the table with asterisks. Some of the asterisks at the start, some at the end. So that appears to be, if all of those with asterisks are being labeled potentially put on hold because of lack of resources, what is being done to make sure those extra resources will be available to tackle those delays in sort of like this?
Thank you very much. So if you look at the pentana, which is high additional resources, we have already managed the process of looking back. So we have one at the moment. But when we look at the other activities in terms of risk communication, go to adoption, designing the whole activity to, and many to our corporate induction, training, that's really taken a lot of time. Knowing that we're within major restructuring of the pentana. And we're trying to look at the quality of every single risk. So just to put a caveat there, yes, we want to do this, but at nowhere. Kind of among four hundred and twenty, the way to land. So even we have to read that, that two, my managers that are well, they also need patience.
So was this sort of plan a bit optimistic at the start? It's badly recognised, it's a bit optimistic, but more resources being of time to try to catch up on this plan, is that the case?
Yes, and no. I think from the place of the system, we, as we started working, I mean, we discovered there are more to be done beyond the role we had planned, we should. As well, we spoke to the providers at this action, as well, we need to do that in terms of all the engineering. We can have every sort of risk, we just pull that activities quite a lot. So that's what we're just about to cut at there.
Questions? Okay, thank you very much. Do I have any more questions? Okay, thank you very much. Audit Committee is asked to note the report and the actions taken in interest twenty two, twenty three, twenty four and most proposed in twenty three, twenty four, to improve the effectiveness of risk management across the organization. Can I tell that duly noted? Okay, we now skip over item fourteen to Agenda Item Number fifteen, which is the deep dive on CRR thirteen, post financial framework, medium term financial plan failure. And what sort of...
Thanks, Jen. So reports to note and to take a deep...
You just could introduce yourself.
Sorry, apologies. Sarah Chong, Rich, Head of Financial Management and Sectional Program. So thank you. Yeah, but the thing was to, is to take a deep look into the risk CRR thirteen, which is the risk the council failed to be able to reasonably estimate. And a group financial end like fatal, both annually and in the medium term. And the council is then unable to set balance budget. The risk until the most recent quarter been flagged as critical at a rating of twenty eight, which was driven by the combined fact that whilst about what you had in that in February, five year medium term, certainly for the last two years of that, was not balanced at that time. There's, there also remains significant uncertainty around future years government funding and the national context around inflation being some of the key areas that drove that assessment. We do have a variety of controls in place to support management of the risk. And they're outlined in detailed reports. Importantly, there are three key actions being undertaken around resourcing of the finance structure to enable us to do that work and afford look improvements to monitoring and savings delivery. Where we've actually implemented new savings frame and tracking from period six. And continuing to work on a dividend better value program and sure from Saturday. What's the, undoubtedly remains some significant uncertainty in terms of medium term financial projections. With the controls what established in the actions now, the way that this has been reassessed as high rather than critical. And that's the key point, points of importance. Want to take any questions?
Questions? So it looks like you've got a flight being on, so it goes with... Okay, so we are asked to note the report. Can I tell that report is duly noted? Thank you. Okay, we move on now to Agenda Item seventeen. This is the digital transformation program and digital transformation governance updates. And I am looking at council, we're asking, so we do have some questions on this. Tim Morris is unable to attend, so I believe, can you introduce yourself?
Good afternoon, John. I'm Joe Park, I'm programmer for the digital transformation program. And I'm joined today by Paul Day, who's the interim head of IT operations. Okay, so the report today is noting the continuing progress of the digital transformation program. It helps to be worth just to know now that this report is very soon to start. That was presented by council change cabinet that day this month. But backgrounds of digital transformation programs formally approved by cabinet in July last year, building upon the development of the previous IT transformation program. Bringing together projects approved by cabinet September twenty one. And the suite of new projects with those key IT risks and continue the council's journey towards a modern and resilient digital environment. The program consists of project three core focuses, contract servants, which should review existing energy contracts. Must do or essential work, such as the networks and the lab things, projects, implementing new technologies there. And in nameless transformation, such as the commitment with digital journey partner. This one's also one of the actions identified as part of the root cause order on the digital governance discussed at the beginning in January of this year. Every time approval from cabinet would make eighteen million pounds. Although the active spend is nearly seven million, over top of that has been formally allocated to projects. The active spend of this will increase quickly now at the network project is in delivery, having two larger projects, and the road to championship, have their business cases approved and need to be approved themselves. The program this week, set projects, sat in cabinet reported in July twenty twenty two. And I should be noted that this program will be by no means be the end of the digital transformation journey that will organization space. Therefore, continual improvement is required to avoid the buildup of technical debt. The digital strategy and roadmap looks to identify the next steps beyond the current program is being formed with this or that initiative. Everyone say this is giving you stories as the programs, the range of projects, including completion of new terminals, implementation of digital journey partner, and a new more resilient internet system in our system content center. The expected, the expected collective program segments have been approved. This is largely due to the internal tender process of which the networks project revisited, which resulted in a contract with lower implementation and lower in going costs. The program segments have been reprovised and approved by delivery executive on the thirteenth of this month. The programs of the seven of the original thirteen projects, the remaining six continuing out of the government's monthly digital transformation program board, which is checked on the digital, the director of policy strategy digital and the new head of digital strategy and transformation as a program executive. And of course, there's embedded insurance included in attendance of the deputy chief of internal board stuff.
Thank you. I'm now over to answer some questions. Awesome. David.
Thank you, Jim. At the last cabinet, I asked a question about the business continuity design for recovery plan because it was put on hold. I was told that phase one was actually complete and that covers revenue, benefits, social care, HR and housing. But phase two was due to be completed by the end of financial year twenty three. Can I have an update on that? Because we're six months into financial year twenty three and it'd be good to know what's going on. And I noticed in your report, you talk about the S and G drive migration. It's one of the key challenges for business economy continuity to make sure that data is actually stored correctly, particularly this one fifty million files on it. Can I have some explanation about what you're doing to actually maintain continuity of those files, please?
Thank you. So in person, I believe, council, coaching, maybe, an update on the self recovery project prior to that cabinet incident.
Is the response to my question, Cameron?
I, the cabinet question, I think, in response to, because really that the, yes, phase one was approached and had the response to a major IT outage, the plans that were there with the critical services being the key focus. Phase two was called to be reviewed by the corporate issue board and as to be re-preferable with the current portfolio of works. It's not something that's currently expected to be performed at this moment in time. That's not to say that no works are being done around our business continuity results of recovery. We do have a range of things going on, such as the retender of our selected contract right now, which is for our self recovery. Our backup of our on the practice service. As well as the digital transformation program has projected end user here, which is the improving of our base and security scores and leveraging Microsoft's capabilities that we have now. So we want to continue to have that project and just develop it. As for the second question for the S and G drive migrations, that is in the time and stage of the business phases due to the council digital transformation board this month. And we have looked at multiple options, including self service, where we have, without services under our aid, instructions to remove their own files. That's not being pointed out, going for a fully managed migration approach. So we'll have specific cloud migration engineers coming to support us with that work, familiar with BCC. We do also have the support of our digital strategic client if we so need. Or we're not engaged in this time, but they have been sold to them. Plans have been, are being, being in business cases. The first kind of work is being focused on IT as that for our first era of a fully managed migration. They're looking at moving the majority of, I'd say, easier files, move the more generic files, which is a lot of those PDFs. And then as a separate workshop for the more difficult files, such as access data, so that it cannot be easily moved to SharePoint. So moving any of my S and G drives into SharePoint if we can, and that is our corporate strategy. And if it's not available to move to SharePoint, it will come to move to an account service to make sure that they have a recovery for the insert. It may be something that is your file, consider SharePoint.
Thank you for that response. Do I have any other questions? Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. We're asked to note the report and the continuing progress on the digital transformation program and its benefits tracking. Let me tell that note, that report is duly noted. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we now move on to item eighteen. This is an update regarding the governance changes related to the council's wholly owned companies. We are going to be asked to note some of the governance changes being led by the shareholder to the way that we as a council manage our interests and our wholly owned companies. In particular, we will also be noting that in this, this year, the committee will receive two reports from the separate personal waste company and Gorham Homes Audit and Risk Assurance Committees. Now that was the audit limited group's audit risk committee has been disbanded. Now would be item nineteen, we'll start with item eighteen, as I believe is she did.
I don't even have to trigger this at the very share.
Helen did tell me that, I thought I'd give you that, because it may sort of...
Thank you, yes, so I'm Helen Davis. So I'm responsible for supporting BCC in its role as shareholder of its wholly owned companies, particularly from a governance perspective. So this first report provides some context for the next reports you will see from Bristol Holding, Gorham and Bristol Waste. Outlines a summary of the governance changes impacting the Bristol Holding group of companies since twenty twenty one. And it covers the development of the role of the strategic client, which is a role played now by the executive director of growth and regeneration, supported by the service directors responsible for BWC and Gorham Homes client functions. And that their role is to ensure that BCC is providing clarity about its strategic expectations for the companies. It also talks about Bristol Holding, which is a parent company of the two remaining companies in the group, which is now providing a more specific assurance role based on providing the shareholder and strategic client with a view of the health of the companies from a business and commercial perspective. This all comes together with the client side in a new informal forum called Companies Assurance Meeting, which means clients of the shareholder group to review key reports under this class. So as a result of these changes, reflecting the much smaller size of the group, the size of Bristol Holding Limited is now being reduced to three staff or quantities with an empty role played by Chris Smith, who attends the boards and audit and risk committees as an observer and the chair, Alex Wiseman, who was formerly the chair of the group ARK. They joined the council appointed director, who is councillor Bennett. So as part of the transition to this model last year, BCC and BHL saw independent advice, which concluded that due to the different business models and markets for Gorham and BWC, the group ARK functions would be best separated out with separate audit and risk assurance committees formed, according to their boards. So between September and April last year, completely recruited to and established those ARKs. And the members will receive first reports on those today. Bristol Holding has been overseeing the smooth transition from the group ARK to the strategic audit committees. And Chris will update shortly on how this has gone from BHL's perspective. So the shareholder group has been keeping the future role of Bristol Holding under ongoing consideration whilst the ARKs have been forming and getting to feed. We've recently welcomed some new, newly appointed board members within the group. So the matter is going to be kept under consideration into twenty twenty four. However, the current position is that the shareholder wishes to retain the flexibility of having a leading but agile Bristol Holding entity because of providing BCC with extra independent commercial capacity whilst all of these governance arrangements are still in children. So finally, the report provides an update on the grant, warrant and value of money actions and the planning which is taking place around how BCC's shareholder role will be exercised within the new committee system. Now, if we have to take any questions on the conference.
Thank you. Do I have any questions from cases? Oh, you get off lightly, Helen. So as I mentioned before, we are now going to go on to item eighteen. So can I just ask our audit committee to note some of the governance changes being led by the shareholder? Can I tell that report is duly noted? Thank you. Okay, we move on to Agenda Item nineteen. Now, this, this is, can be highly complicated because we've got quite a few people who are going to be speaking. While I ask for each of the speakers to introduce themselves on their world. What I'll also say is there is an exempt appendix in the report. If are any questions, we fill in to information and that exempt appendix, we'll need to go into a seminar session to, can you please notify me if you're... When we get to that stage, if you plan to ask questions about the exempt appendix, can you please make sure you notify me and then we can go into a seminar session? What I propose to do, if, I think this is the way we're going to do it, is allow each of Bristol Holding go first. We'll have time for questions. Whisper, Gorham Homes will then go second, time for questions, and then Bristol Waste will take the final bow. So if I've sent anyone, Chris, I'm going to go with you first.
Yes, thank you, Jim. My name is Chris Smith. I'm the interim group finance director to Bristol Holding. And you'll see a report attached, which is the, the work that's been carried out on behalf of Bristol Holding Audit and Risk Committee for the last financial year. That's important to note that the functions of the BHL Audit and Risk Committee have been transferred to the subsidiary Audit and Risk Committees, the ARKs, from the fourteenth of February. So it was a smooth handle of roles and responsibilities around the Bristol Holding part, as it's called. The ARKs have made a good start. And it was always felt that it would take between eighteen and twenty four months to reach maturity. In the meantime, BHL continues in its assurance role, the shareholder. It attends all, sort of a recovery hall meetings and all company ARK meetings on behalf of the shareholder. I'll assume that, of course, you read the report and I just wanted then just open this up to any questions on the report.
Do we have any questions on the Bristol Holding report? Thank you very much. Well presented, Chris. And now move on to Gorham Homes. Andrew, I'm going to go first. If you'd like to introduce yourself.
Thank you. So I am Andrew Martin-Jones and I chair the Gorham Assurance Risk Committee. And I'm also a member of the Gorham Homes Board. The role of this committee is to advise the board and provide key assurance to the shareholder that the company is operating in an effective control environment. As you'll see from our Audit and Risk Assurance Report, Gorham Homes has robust policies and structures in place to allow it to operate effectively. and structures in place to allow it to operate effectively. The work at the committee will ensure that this continues as laid out in the terms of reference which you will pay for this. So the role really is to ensure that the company complies with all its legal and regulatory obligations, that the internal control process is maintained, that arrangements are in place to ensure that it acts ethically, responsibly, and sustainably in all areas of its work, that risks are understood, managed, and mitigated where possible, and that an open and honest culture continues to be encouraged. The meetings are aligned with the Gorham Homes board meetings, the new committee reports, and that usually takes place about five times a year. Our work this year is summarising the report, and I believe it shows that Gorham is operating in a responsible and effective way. I'm very happy to take any questions.
Okay, just before we do that, Chris and Stephen, would you like to briefly introduce yourselves as well, or through, some of us already know who you are.
Of course, I'm Chief Finance Officer, Gorham Homes.
Steve, making managing director of Gorham Homes.
Thank you. Do you have any questions from members of the committee? Thanks, and Tim, can you?
Thanks, just a quick one, I noticed that the assurance order has two fault numbers, as well as the techniques, do you feel two is enough to be able to provide vigorous challenge?
We have two, I think that's commensurately the size, the size of the, of the business at present. However, I'm conscious that the quorum, potential quorum issues, that if we only got two, we need two for quorum, that that could be a problem in some instances, but what we've done is that in terms of reference, we have the capability to co-opt another board member, two activity, as and when required.
Do you have any other questions for that, or maybe?
Sorry, Chair, briefly then, can I just say, I think, a couple of years ago, when some of these structures were brought to audit committee, we did kind of a bit of worrying about the number of members involved in the audit process, and I just sort of pushed back, that you'd consider potentially adopting a third member to, to sort of give you that ability to be able to ensure that you have, one, say, a bit of a reserve in case of quorum, but also just be able to, be able to do that vigorous challenge to the, to the board of directors, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kent, I'll just say quickly, now I'm back over to Andrew, we are in the process, as we highlighted earlier with Chris's presentation at the beginning of the journey on the Audit and Risk Committee for Gorham Homes, based on the scale of activity of the company, the membership is, as Andrew I'm about to commence over the work, to deliver, but we need to make sure that we review and keep it updated as we go forward. So my observation would be that as a small business that is growing and a new committee that is forming, we'll give it under review, but at the moment, it's not looking for the right number of people within the committee. Andrew is here as Chair, and we have committee members that are non members of the board, so we just need to manage our overhead as well, in terms of our governance of our companies. Andrew, do you have any else to add?
I don't really have anything else to add, I think this is something that we will bear in mind and keep under review really as the, as the organisation grows.
And my understanding also that Simba and Alison from V C C into the audit also attend the audit committee in September to provide for. Hello, any more questions from members of the committee? Okay, thank you, guys, we'll move on to you, Chris.
Thank you very much, I'm Chris Sun, I'm the Director of Finance and Strategy for Bristol Waste, thank you for inviting me. Firstly, I'd like to thank the former Chair of our Audit and Risk Assurance Committee for what is not primarily, but the substantive elements of the report, of the work that she's done on behalf of the committee and the, the opinions therein. Obviously, she resigned as, as an non-executive director at the end of July, having done two years with the company, and I would now like to take this opportunity to introduce Ronnie Pritchard, who is the new Chair of our Audit and Risk Assurance Committee, and will from now on be reporting on this, on this matter on, on the, on the company's behalf. So this report sets out the, effectively a report of the, of the ARK, the Audit and Risk Assurance Committee, from the period September twenty two, when the, the committee first met, to the period to April of this year. I have the four meetings during that period, and a number of significant areas of assurance and scrutiny were undertaken during that period. The, in the initial report, which, which is in your pack around the company's assurance group, it sets out the areas that we felt were appropriate for reporting on with regards to the, to the overall report, and we've tried to follow that where possible, that, that approach. We also show as an appendix, appendix three to the report, the outcome of our, effectively the, the three lines assurance approach that we take, this of the independent comprehensive assurance that we get, or an integrated assurance report, which demonstrates some areas of really good practice, but obviously some areas of concern. I think what is, I would like to say is that what it demonstrates is that there's been some significant improvements during the period, during the process, and certainly recently subsequent to this report, we've done, we've had some independent reviews of health and safety on our site, which have come out very positive, in terms of the outcomes of those, and also some, some audits which have shown, demonstrate some improvement in some of the systems and controls within the organisation. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris, do you have any questions? Zoe?
Hi, yeah, yeah, I did waste management for local authorities before, so got a lot of interest in that area, and I also know how difficult it is to operate when, particularly when there's high fuel inflation, in this case as well as wage inflation, and you've got, you're obviously bound by what the council's, the REIT fund, and so, yeah, and things are going up, Bristol does collect, and what's now called simple collections, doesn't it? What was consistent collection, so we're sort of ready to not anticipate major changes, but obviously there are changes coming up with extended producer responsibility and digital, what's it, deposit return receipts, and in terms of anticipating how that might impact on what's collected, are you doing that sort of longer term anticipation of how those different elements might impact on materials that you collect, what the value of those are going to be, you know, what's going to be left after D R S, and obviously from the council would be obtaining the central government funding for E P R, but how that might impact on Bristol Waste's future income?
Yeah, absolutely, and they're, they're really important considerations that we have to take as part of our long-term planning for the business. It's very difficult, actually, in an environment with the decisions are actually not being taken at that level, so we're, we're sort of to some degree planning on known unknowns and unknown ones, which is, which causes us significant issues, but certainly we, we're assessing the potential impact of things like D R S and, 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 and all of the other potential initiatives that the, 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 the government are looking at that and how that could potentially change how we operate in the future.
Yeah, obviously will help, like announcements we made on the fly on Wednesday afternoon.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
David?
Thank you, Jim. Couple of points about the actual report itself, pages one six three through one six five are actually bit maps, and you can't index content in, in those pages, can the report be changed so that they are properly presented, please?
Sorry, you've got the battery there, Councilor, because my, my page numbers on this go from twenty five to fifty four, so.
One six three and I'll be bundled with pages.
They may not have access to the main bundle.
All right, okay. Ben, I like, we could deal with that offline, but it'd be really good to have a report that was completely indexed all the way through. And on page one six three, you talked about the environmental discharge breaches, can we have some more information about what those breaches were, please?
Yeah. Did you say one six?
Page twenty seven.
Page twenty seven, okay.
You find point page twenty seven, because I'm using seven seven to you, that helps.
So we, we've been obviously providing the committee with, with further information on many specifics that have been requested on this, that's not a proper place.
Denise, come on to.
What's going to take to do is an opportunity to go to a seminar session, it may be useful to do that, be able to talk through it in a bit more depth, and that's scheduled for today as well, whilst we have call this in.
Okay, so on that, I am going to move us into a seminar session, so apologies to Dan and Alex, but you're going to have to leave us now.